Welcome you to this regular called meeting of the Temple City Council. It is currently five oh seven. Apologize for running just a little bit late. Please rise as we're led in the invocation by Robert Hall with Corinth Missionary Baptist Church and the pledge by City Secretary Janet Llewellyn.
Good evening. Let's bow in prayer, please. Most gracious, all wise, ever loving, kind, Father God, it is humbly with grateful attitudes and grateful hearts. Oh heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to this meeting. We pray heavenly Father, and we give you thanks for your son, Jesus Christ, who came and died on the cross for our sins and salvation and eternal life. What love you showed through him. Now, Father, we ask that you come and sit in on this meeting. Take charge even heavenly Father, clear our minds and our hearts and remove all obstacles and obstructions from our mind that we may be free to focus on what is to do here today, the agenda, and carry on in a respectful manner and that each and every need would be met according to your will, heaven's father, for this evening, and that the outcome will be most profitable for our community, our city, even our county where we're involved in. We give you thanks, honor, and glory for allowing us the privilege to be here. We say this all in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much. Now we'll move on to public comments. Any citizens that wish to address the council on any matter may do so. We just ask that you step to the podium, state your name for the record, or raise your hand on the virtual platform. We've got a few folks that have signed up tonight. First one that we'll hear from is Myrna Dalton.
Myrna Dalton, I just wanted to make a few comments on the roadway construction that is going down on in downtown Temple. There have been businesses that have had to modify their hours and a business that recently closed. So I understand that this is a necessary inconvenience as we progress as a city. But my question is, is there a program, any type of grants to offset the loss of revenue that these businesses are experiencing because of the construction? And also, what is the anticipated date of completion? And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody will be in touch with you. Mr. Lidle?
Alan Lidle, Temple, Texas. I realize I'm supposed to address the council, but actually my comments are for the audience. I wanted to remind everybody tomorrow night, we have the community summit down at Santa Fe Plaza, where you get to come and meet and greet all of your city departments from five to seven. And then on Sunday at one forty-five, we're getting together at the old Chick-fil-A building on Azalea for a life change. Please come out and help us spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
All right. Next up is special recognitions. Is Nancy here? Well, there you are. Come on up. Yeah. Nancy, you are here to recognize HEB and Suzie Q's Cafe for their support of Keep Temple Beautiful in 2024?
Cool. You have the most of the board here to do the presentation. So they're gonna come up and present the awards and I'll use the button to say handheld mic. I'm gonna take it.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
And if Suzie Qs, y'all would please come and join us and HEB. Stand right here. So, good evening, everyone. It is my great honor to recognize a remarkable sponsor of Keep Temple Beautiful, Suzie Q's owner Elaine Montalbo and her husband Elvis. Through their small business, they've been a true beacon of community spirit here in Temple. Their passion for our city and its well-being is evident in everything they do, but especially in their support for Keep Temple Beautiful. Elaine's dedication to making every neighborhood a clean, green, and beautiful place to live truly embodies the mission of Keep Temple Beautiful. Her belief in giving back and her love for our community are an inspiration to us all. We know that small businesses are the backbone for any community, and when they actively work to enhance and protect that community, the impact is immeasurable. Elaine, through her Suzie Qs and personal commitment, donated over fifty delicious lunches, I had one, to our first annual Loop 363 Spring Clean, showing us what it means to deeply care about the place we call home. On behalf of Keep Temple Beautiful and the entire Temple community, we are proud to present this award to Suzie Qs in recognition of her unwavering support and dedication. Thank you, Elaine, for your outstanding contributions, your love for our city, and for always leading by example. Please join me in congratulating Suzie Qs. I now have the great honor of recognizing our next sponsor, as well as introducing one of our newest programs. Little Sprouts is a program that will kick off in January of 2025. It's going to start at Western Hills Elementary School here in Temple. We will select twelve fifth graders to be our inaugural class, and we will meet once per month after school with each meetup having a focused topic related to environmental sustainability. This program requires a lot of collaboration and community support, and HEB was one of the first to jump on board to help make Little Sprouts a reality. Their generous donation will help with supplies needed to successfully implement the program. Keep Temple Beautiful and our future Little Sprout graduates would like to thank HEB for their support. Please join me in congratulating HEB. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kent. Seeing. All right. Next up is another special recognition to recognize October twenty twenty-four is Czech Heritage Month. We have Brian Yanacheck with SPJST with us. And Brian, if you don't mind, on your way down, would you grab that mic? No, keep coming. There you go. Note that one that I was gonna give him, let to let him make comments here. Just use the Okay. Okay. So everybody's making this awkward. You come here first.
You mean to come up?
I have a whole plan. Yes. Yes. Bring that with you. I don't need so much help up here. All right. So after I read this, you're gonna talk to the crowd with that. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. If I may, this is the proclamation from the office of the mayor of the city of Temple, and the proclamation reads, whereas the month of October typically brings to Texas a host of festivals celebrating the Czech heritage that are enjoyed by a multitude of citizens across the state. And whereas, beginning in the late eighteen forties, Czech settlers came in growing numbers to the Lone Star State, gravitating to the rich soil of the black lands and the upper coastal plains, these industrious pioneers created close-knit communities that kept intact their unique old-world customs while adapting to the challenges of a new land. And whereas, since that time, the number and stature of Czech descendants living in Texas has grown tremendously. There are, by some estimates, approximately one million people living in all areas of the state in walks of life who can claim Czech heritage. And whereas, from their earliest days in Texas, Texans sought to preserve their language, traditions, songs, and dances, foods, and customs. And whereas, Czechs are renowned for their exemplary work ethic and the love of democracy and have established standards of excellence as both private and public citizens to whom we can all aspire. And because of generation, sorry, I didn't read that right, and because for generations Texans of Czech ancestry have made many notable contributions, both cultural and historic, to the betterment of our state, and their many accomplishments in this regard are truly worthy of special recognition. Now therefore, I, Timothy A. Davis, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-four as Czech Heritage Month in the city of Temple, Texas, and I hereby invite every citizen to recognize and celebrate contributions made to Texas by Czech settlers and their descendants. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand on the sill of the city of Temple on this third day of October twenty twenty-four. So congratulations. And if you don't mind letting everybody know who you are and a little bit about Czech Heritage Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
My name is Brian Vanacek, and I'm a native of this community. I am the president and CEO of SPJSG Paternal Life here. And if any of you know anything about SPJSG, it ties very closely into the Czech community. Initially, it was predominantly Czech members, but over the last seventy years, it's men, women, boys, and girls of every race, creed, national origin, and so forth. And the proclamation you read was beautiful, but you know, there are a lot of different heritage and cultural groups that make up the city of Temple, this region, and the Czechs are just happy to be a part of it all. It's great. We celebrate this month, and one of the things we're doing to get started, we're gonna have a fun run on Saturday at Bold Republic Brewing. I think that's seventy-seven Stone Hollow Road. And if anybody wants to participate in that, that's Saturday morning at eight o'clock. We'd love to have you come out there. And again, again, Czech Heritage Month in the month of October, you know, we've been celebrating it since nineteen ninety-six. It's been a statewide observance. And again, SPJSG proud to carry that banner and really getting proud to be a part of the city of Temple since nineteen fifty-three. We just celebrated our hundred and twenty-seventh birthday in July. And if you need anything, you know, related to SPJSG, namely life insurance, just give us a call. So we'd love to help you. Really, it's the basis of the organization. Yes, we do sell life insurance, but that's really the engine that keeps the paternal part of the organization going. I mean, we've got seventy groups of members all around the state. Y'all probably see the lodges, you know, in the area here. And the whole idea is based on doing good for each other and the communities that you serve. And like a cooperative, a good portion of the profits from the sale of the product goes back to the local units. And in turn, they can use that to, again, do good for the community. But again, thank you so much for the time to address the group here today and for the proclamation. We do appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you for, and thank you for everything SPJST does for the community. And that is, you know, because of your, the program, the life insurance sale that ultimately goes out and spent in the community. That's why you have such a, you know, strong longstanding cultural heritage. So thank you for that.
It all goes hand in hand. Yes, sir. Thanks. Would it be possible to get a photograph together with you?
Sure.
Can somebody do the honors? If you don't mind.
Oops, got it.
Check?
No. That's the solid.
Oh, well. Oktoberfest, that is a very, very much a celebration that the Czechs plug into. But really, I would say it's a German celebration, but the Germans predated the Czechs in Texas. And oftentimes, if you saw a German community, you would find the Czech community afterwards. But yes, we do celebrate Oktoberfest. And the big celebration, you know, we've got a Czech Heritage Museum here in Temple, and I'll cut it short here. We've got a museum here in Temple, and we're going to be having a big celebration. It's called Czech National Day. It's gonna be on October twenty-seventh, but it's actually gonna be at Pupvar in Waco. But yeah, it's a great celebration. It's a great place to celebrate. We're just trying to broaden the idea of the Czech Heritage Museum as a museum without walls. And we're trying to expand the reach. And anyway, if anybody's interested in it, you can contact me at the SPJSG home office, and I would love to have you come out to Waco on Sunday, October twenty-seventh, from two to six p.m. It's gonna be a great celebration.
Yes.
I will give this to you.
To me.
All right. Very good. Next up is to recognize October sixth through the twelfth, twenty twenty-four is Fire Prevention Week. Chief, you'll come up?
There. All right. From the office of the mayor of the city of Temple, whereas Fire Prevention Week is observed each year during the week of October ninth in commemoration of the great Chicago fire, which began on October eighth, eighteen seventy-one, and caused devastating damage. This horrific conflagration killed more than two hundred fifty people, left one hundred thousand homeless, destroyed more than seventeen thousand four hundred structures, and burned more than two thousand acres of land. Whereas, the city of Temple is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city by educating everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in their homes. Whereas, roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarm. And whereas, the city of Temple firefighters are dedicated to reducing recurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and education, and encourage residents to have a functional smoke detector in their homes and exercise increased hazardous increased hazard awareness and safety when cooking. Whereas, the twenty twenty-four Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms, Make More For You, effectively serves to remind us that these simple actions we can take keep our lives and our families safer from fire during Fire Prevention Week in year round. Now therefore, I, Timothy A. Davis, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of October sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-four is Fire Prevention Week in the city of Temple, Texas, and I urge all citizens to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety message of Fire Prevention Week twenty twenty-four and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Temple's fire and rescue emergency services. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand on the sill of the city of Temple, Texas, this is the third day of October twenty twenty-four. Thank you, sir. Turn it off. Yeah.
So, quick quiz for council. So, does anyone know how the great Chicago fire started?
Over a bucket.
You know, who's cow? Very good. So there is cow kicked over a lantern while she was milking it and started the whole fire. So.
I said bucket. Mike's right.
Yep. So I did bring our fire prevention staff with us. Yep. So cold start.
Get that with that car.
It probably did kick the bucket out. So I did bring the, our fire prevention staff with us, consisting of our fire marshal, Landy Setzer, and I'm gonna let him introduce the rest of his staff. But these are some folks that are often working behind the scenes, aren't seen out, and you know, aren't thought of very much because of the work that they do do is, is, like I said, behind the scenes and not observed by the public most times, but they do a tremendous amount of work in keeping our citizens safe and keeping our firefighters safe. So that's what we really concentrate on in the fire prevention division is keeping citizens and firefighters safe by the upkeep of building codes in our buildings. So, here you go, Elaine.
Thank you, chief. Just real quick, to my far left is Santo Soto. He is our public educator. So he is the person that if you see somebody out, he is generally the person that's teaching about fire safety. So he deals a lot with our industry as well as our schools. And so fire prevention is a team sport. And as early as we can get people playing the game, that we're, we're a safer community, especially in and around the home. Jason Riley is a deputy fire marshal. He is essentially our chief arson investigator. He also helps me with code enforcement and plan review. He does a lot of that, and I appreciate him sticking around for as long as he has. Like I said, like chief said, I'm Landy. I am the fire marshal, or by title, I guess I am the assistant chief of fire prevention in the city. So that's what I do. I do a lot of answering questions about code and doing a lot of plan reviews to make sure that our buildings that are going to be built are complying with the minimum requirements set forth by the adopted fire code. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. And mayor, just one final announcement. We have our annual fire safety day on Saturday, October twelfth, at, starting at ten a.m., going to one p.m. We'll have a bunch of different fire safety displays, and we'll have a free lunch for everybody that attends as well. And so we would invite everybody to come out, go through the, the fire safety displays, look around, meet your temple firefighters, and enjoy lunch with us. And we'd love to see you out there on the twelfth.
What station?
I'm sorry, Central's at Central Station. So, and you can, if you're brave enough, we'll be giving rides in the Diamond T that day. I'll be driving most likely. So if you're brave enough to jump in the truck with me, I'll take you on a ride in the Diamond T.
Thanks, man. Good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, while y'all are snapping a picture, I just wanted to take a quick moment to highlight that this team that you see right there has been working really hard the, the last several days as, I think, highlight the important work that they do to keep our community safe, both, you know, with, with buildings that where we're, where we're working to, you know, address code issues, but also with, with recent fire incident that happened in the industrial park. So I think it's just a great reminder of how important the work they do for our community and for us as individuals are. And they are some of the hardest working guys that you'll find around. They do an incredible amount of work for just a, a small team of folks, and I'm, I'm grateful to work with them.
Okay. Now let's jump into the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted in one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item can be pulled from that consent agenda and, and be considered separately. In workshop, it was determined that we needed tonight to pull item sixteen from the consent agenda, just for voting purposes. So councils, anything else that needs to be pulled? Are we ready to move forward? Okay. Then at this time, council, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda, which is item six A through six A F, less item sixteen.
Here, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, item six A through six A F minus item sixteen.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Counsel, if you would, please cast your vote. Item six A through six A F minus sixteen passes five votes to zero. Moving on to item sixteen, that item is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing a construction contract with R.T. Schneider Company Limited of Belton for the construction of North P Ridge Road, improvements phase one in the estimated amount of five million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Counsel, if there's no discussion on item sixteen, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve sixteen.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Council member Long. Counsel, please cast your vote. Sixteen passes four votes yes, zero votes no, and one abstention. Item seven is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from Central Area District to Plan Development Central Area to allow the application of permanent cosmetics as a permitted use at one oh two East Central Avenue, Temple, Texas.
All right. Thank you, mayor and council. And just to orient you to the location here, you can see this is at East Central and North Second Street. So right down the street from us in the heart of downtown. City Center Project is going on on Central right now, but this is what used to be known as the Sears Building, which has been completed and is about ready to occupy, including commercial spaces as part of the Han Plaza project. And so here you can see the aerial of the tenant space that is proposed to be occupied by this business, which is a salon and which would also provide permanent cosmetics as a service. Here is the floor plan, and so you can just see in a little more detail. And so this is actually an existing business. They're in West Temple now, and so relocating to downtown. So we're excited about that, to keep a, a, a good business in town and also be part of the, the downtown excitement and revitalization. Our current Unified Development Code does not define permanent cosmetics. And it's included as part of tattooing in our tattooing ordinance. And so it's a very similar process. You know, it's a ink under the skin, but it's, it, it's a different different use essentially. So what we're working on is to be able to define it, distinguish between the two. It's often associated with cancer patients or cancer survivors, you know, to be able to have eyebrows permanently just included. A plan development is the mechanism to allow this until we amend the code. And so here on, on the right, you can see that we have our definition of tattooing. And so, you know, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but it does say the term includes the application of permanent cosmetics. And so I've highlighted cosmetic tattooing, permanent cosmetics. They're, they're synonymous, but would also be applied by, you know, licensed personnel for permanently or semi-permanently mimicking typical makeup applications and some of those for the reasons that I mentioned before. And so here's the space. You can see it's coming along nicely, and the Sears Building's looking really good. And I mentioned the City Center Project on East Central is also coming along nicely and is actually more progress has been made since those pictures were taken. Now that, because that was before Planning and Zoning Commission. And then across the street to the south is what is known as the SPJST Building, I guess, for October Czech Heritage Month. And, but also known as the professional building by some, maybe those who aren't Czech. So the, the surrounding properties to the west include the Masonic Lodge. And so when you look at our comprehensive plan and the neighborhood plan, because this is also in the downtown neighborhood planning district, comp plan calls for downtown core mix of institutional retail, residential uses, certainly a salon with this accessory use is appropriate. And the downtown neighbor, neighborhood planning district, also City Center Sub District calls for a similar mix of residential and office and retail. And so looking at the overall compliance summary, staff has interpreted this PD and this use to comply with all of our various plans. And sixteen notices were sent out to property owners within two hundred feet, and to date, we haven't received any responses from those neighbors. And so staff recommends approval with the following conditions. And, and that's essentially defining the cosmetic tattooing as allowed at this particular location. That business hours, and this is what was worked out with the business early on, is business hours Monday through Saturday, ten a.m. to six p.m. That's what they said they needed. But actually, P and Z worked with them to provide a little bit more flexibility. You'll see that in a second. And that the applicant must follow all state of Texas health and human services requirements. And of course, all other central area zoning requirements would apply. And so at the September sixteenth meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommended or to council by a vote of six to zero, per staff recommendation, but with one addition, that those business hours to give them a little more flexibility, expand those to, from, you know, ten a.m. to six p.m. to eight a.m. to seven p.m. And the applicant was thrilled with that. And that's all that I have. And that's all that I have and glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Counsel, anything for Brian?
I have one question. If in the future, as residential development occurs downtown and people want to do more shopping and events on Sundays, could that be expanded to Sunday if the owners chose they wanted to do that?
Not without condition, without, without amending it. So if
But we could amend it if, if all of those things were to come about and the requests were made.
Absolutely.
Could also make it right now if you don't have, if you don't feel like restricting it away from Sunday is meaningful, you could do it right now.
Well, I'm not, I don't need to do that. I just know that life is, business life is going on on Sunday in many places. And it may, may occur as residential development occurs downtown.
I, I, I think I, I won't, I guess I will speak for Brian and he can look at me and say, no, that's not true. But I believe that staff in our, in, in crafting our recommendation, we just took the hours, the days and hours that they were currently planning on operating. So I don't think staff would have any objection if council wanted to expand out the, I, I don't see any reason that you would want to be concerned about, you know, adding Sunday if that's something you'd like to do. And then that would eliminate a step for them in the future if they do expand their business hours.
No objections on, from a staff perspective, though. Don't see any issues with them operating on Sunday if they desire to do so.
We don't.
Again, if they were to desire only.
We don't generally say how, when they can operate for other businesses, except maybe liquor stores and stuff, do we?
Right, that's, that's typically something you'd see with a conditional use permit. And in the, in a, in a sense, this plan development is like a conditional use permit. It just is not, because it's not a defined use in the table. It requires a plan development. But yeah, that's usually where the CP.
We've talked about in the past, changing that definition of tattooing, or I guess expanding it.
Yes, there've been, and I think particularly in, I think maybe twenty seventeen, there was probably a lot of discussion about that. So we'll
Might be time to just go.
Get that fixed with the UDC. They made it to our list of changes to make.
Right, okay.
But if we did that and left this in here, they're stuck with, with, with it because we put it in here, right?
Yes.
Correct.
And go ahead and do it then. So, okay.
It's off as a condition.
Counsel, anything else for open to public hearing? Alright, item seven, subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may do so. Step to the podium and state your name for the record or raise your hand on the platform.
Alan Lidle here in Temple. I don't object to the permanent makeup. What I'm concerned with is I actually went out to try to find this building several times this week and I couldn't get there from here because of what the young ladies did at the very front, all the constructions. So when are we expecting this business to go into effect?
It's a sneaky way of saying, when are we going to get done with the stuff downtown?
But I can't speak to the exact timeline on the city center. I just know that it, the relocation of the business is contingent upon the completion of the city center project. So I know Don Bond, Public Works Director, could probably speak to the actual timeline, but I know it's coming along very well.
Okay, well, we'll leave Don out of it. Whenever the road's ready, they'll relocate.
That, that is correct. They're, they're tracking more than I am.
Right, understood. Okay, anybody else from the audience? Anybody on the platform? Don, are you gonna go? Oh, there you go. Okay. No, no. Okay, very good. Then I'll close the public hearing on item seven and counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, but first I wanted to remove the time restriction as part of my motion or the not just the time. If we could, I'd like to put that as part of my motion. And then I would also like to publicly thank, I did this in workshop, but I wanted to be sure and thank Kyle Nuttall, who's not here. But Kathy Davis, they spent a lot of time making sure that we were able to get to yes for these folks. And we started this process, I think in April and y'all really, you stuck with it and I'm very grateful. And I know that, that both of these ladies are really excited to be a part of downtown. But thank you. Thank you, Brian. I appreciate that. Assuming it passes.
Ladies on being the first tenants, it's really a banner day.
That's exciting that we're, all the stuff we've been doing down here, this is a, one of the first steps to our next little thing we're messing with.
So Liz and Amanda are the two ladies that are going to be taking over this position. And did you want to speak?
A few of us had, staff members had a chance to tour the Han Plaza, the, I'm sorry, I, I'm the one who says, don't call it the old Sears building and here I am calling it the old Sears building. But it, it is a really well-done renovation and I think they'll have a beautiful space. I'm excited to see what, what they, how they finish it out and it, it should be a great space. It's very exciting.
My motion stands to remove the conditions and to approve item number seven.
And I'm happy to second that motion.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Long. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item seven passes five votes to zero, and I don't think I closed the public hearing, so the public hearing is closed too. Moving on.
Mayor, may I just, I, I, you were just removing the, the one condition about hours of operation and times and dates about of operation, but not the other conditions. Okay, thank you. Just to make sure I understood correctly.
Alright, we're ready. Item eight is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit to allow retail sales of all alcoholic beverages for off-premise consumption at one-two-one-zero East Adams Avenue, Temple, Texas. Mr. Deckman.
Alright, good evening, Mayor and Council. So this went to PNZ on September sixteenth. Tonight, as you can see, is the first reading for the CUP for Sam's Liquor at one-two-one-zero East Adams. So it's located on the east side of town. As you can see on the vicinity map on the left, the green area is Ferguson Park. We'll show you that in a photo. And on the aerial photo, you see the, the long retail building with homes on either side and it faces Adams Avenue. So we've got some site photos of the building. As you can see, it's brightly colored and the parking area faces to the east. There were some, some recent changes and the applicant has painted over the liquor sign on the front. So you see that updated photo. That was yesterday, so we just wanted to add that as an update based on the photos that we had sent out with the meeting packet. Notice in the lower left photo, the dumpster located on the front as well as the trash bin. And the next set of photos shows Ferguson Park across the road, looking east back down Adams Avenue. The lower left photo shows both the applicant's home and another neighboring home that are right adjacent to this business. And then the lower right, one of the requirements for any business, not necessarily the liquor store, but any business that's adjacent to residential, there's a requirement for screening. The applicant was informed of that. He went ahead and started the fence. You see the yellow tag in there. Was told to go back, get the fence permit. And as you can see on the lower right-hand photo, as of yesterday, the fence appears to be mostly complete. So they have permitted, they have submitted a site plan showing the, the internal layout of the store. Off-premise sales of alcohol, what the code calls a package store, what everybody else usually calls a liquor store, requires the conditional use permit in the GR zoning. Chapter four governs distance for alcohol sales. There's no protected uses within three hundred feet. You may ask, what about the park? That applies for on-premise consumption. So your bars, this is not that. There's no other protected uses, which would be schools, churches, or hospitals. We did get public input through the neighborhood planning process. There had been a town hall meeting where they solicited feedback for the neighbors on a number of issues. This came up for multiple residents. There's a survey response specifically about that. So we will speak a little bit about the, the feedback from the neighborhood planning process, but that's why we have that process. And there's a history of non-compliance with the code. It's, it's relevant to tell you how we got here. So the applicant had a previous business over on corner of Martin Luther King and Central. Sold that business, sold that property to the city, moved the business here to East Adams. Started selling alcohol prior to receipt of the city conditional use permit. He had his TABC permit. He renewed that, changed the address, started doing renovations to the building, had not applied for building permits. When he was informed by code compliance that you need to apply for permits, he did so. Those permits were approved on September tenth. Fire marshal had done inspection, noted discrepancies. He passed on the follow-up inspection and as I showed you on the, the site photo, was informed of a requirement for the screening and to get the fence permit. Didn't get that permit and as you saw on the photo, fence was installed and this is located in Temple ISD. So as far as what is the neighborhood think about this business specifically, but the needs around the neighborhood? And there was one comment that specifically mentioned the city allowed the liquor store. One of the questions is, what are the weaknesses of the neighborhood? They mentioned the need for grocery store. They mentioned homeless people, loud music, other crimes and thefts. What business is missing? Grocery, retail, and convenience store, sixteen responses out of seventy responses mentioned the need for retail sales. And other importance of city service, you know, the street condition, public safety was a big one. And code enforcement was rated as somewhat important, but it wasn't the top of the list, but it was on in there. So when we receive a permit or a request for a conditional use permit, we look at a number of criteria and it really, it's to determine that top bullet. Is this use, is this business compatible with the surrounding neighborhood? So the table on the right sums up, is it compatible with the neighboring property? Having the, the business next to the home, it's partial, the zoning was already there. There had been previous businesses. But out of respect for the responses from the neighborhood, the opinion is heavily not in favor of this being compatible. So that's, that's top of the list. That's partially compatible. Does not impede normal development, has adequate utilities, access and drainage. It's developed site. They've got the parking. Doesn't impede the movement of traffic. Adams is an arterial. Odors, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration. We evaluated this a no based on the location of the dumpster. Directional lighting is a no. UDC section five point three seventeen prohibits window signs in liquor store illuminated signage. If you, I didn't call it out in the photo, but there are illuminated signs on the windows and the doors of the, the business. So that would be a no. Is this compatible? And then sufficient landscaping and screening, that's a change from the PNZ during the PNZ presentation. We marked that as no because they had landscaping, but no screening. They now have the screening and buffering in place. So that has been changed to a yes. And city council may impose additional conditions with the approval of any CUP. And you also have the right to revoke a CUP once granted. So we send out notifications for any zoning change, any conditional use permit. We sent out fifteen notices to residents, owners of property within two hundred feet. We received zero notices in agreement. We received seven notices representing eight properties, so one owner owned two properties. And we did the math. If more than twenty percent of the area is in disagreement, it triggers the super majority at council. So the, the properties that disagreed are shown on the map. It was thirty-four percent disagreed. So the super majority requirement is triggered and the newspaper printed notice of the public hearing is September fifth. So based on the negative feedback that we heard through the neighborhood planning process, the requested conditional use permit would be in conflict with the East Downs neighborhood plan and staff does not recommend approval of the requested CUP. At the September sixteenth PNZ meeting, PNZ voted six to zero to recommend denial. That said, y'all have the, the power to make your own decisions. If you choose to approve the conditional use permit, these are the conditions that staff would recommend. Continued compliance with building and fire safety, compliance with chapter four regarding sales of alcohol, regarding compliance with five point three point seventeen, which specifically covers liquor stores. Number four is pulled from the TABC requirement for liquor stores so that the store hours are open Monday to Saturday, ten to nine, Sundays and holidays. And if the holiday falls on Sunday, they have to be closed the following Monday. And that's pulling straight from the straight, the state law, so it will mirror that, that the site plan exhibit A is review and approval of director planning if there are major changes to the site plan or the sales of alcohol. Say they wanted to switch to be in a restaurant or a bar and have on-premise, that would be a completely different CUP that would come back to council. And that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Deckman. Counsel, anything for Jason?
Did have a question about the, the, those in disagreement. Could you go back to that slide? The ones in red were disagreement, correct?
Correct.
And then the ones in white weren't in agreement.
The ones in white just didn't respond.
Okay, and doesn't the applicant live?
The applicant lives immediately next door.
Didn't respond.
Typically, he didn't return a letter. No, ma'am.
Okay, alright, that's, that was my question. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I, then one more thing I'll note that the applicant, Mr. Khan, is here tonight, if you'd like to hear from him.
Very good, thank you. Alright, this item also is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may do so. State your name for the record or raise your hand on the platform, please.
Alan Lidle, I hope you agree with the findings of staff and deny this permit. I came across, went across one of our parks today and found a nice sign that said, it, you know, not the, what am I trying to say? That alcohol was not allowed in the park. Now, I know it's the city park. I don't know if all of our parks are that way. But if, if this were to be approved, I would love to see a nice, big, beautiful sign on the park across the street that says, no alcohol here. As I would hate to see the vagrants that were mentioned just walk across the street to drink. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? Anyone on the platform? No one else from the audience? Alright, very good. Then, Council, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item number eight.
I'll move to deny item number eight.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Councilmember Long. Counsel, please cast your vote.
The reminder voting yes for this, for this motion is a denial of the permit. I know that can be confusing, so just a reminder.
Alright, the, this, this, this item does require super majority, which is four out of five. And there are four votes yes, which is to deny the conditional use permit, one vote no. And so we have a four vote to one to deny the conditional use permit. Moving on to item nine is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning request from Light Industrial, the single family attached to on point seven-five plus or minus acres located in the city of Temple, Texas, Bell County, addressed as three oh two and three oh four North Twelfth, five thirteen and five fifteen East Downs. Mr. Chandler.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. And so this is a city-initiated rezoning and in response to neighborhood planning efforts, but also working with housing and community development. And so you can see the aerial on the right where this is multiple lots. It's the entire block south of, of East Downs and west of North Twelfth, and it's across from the Hilliard Distribution Company. So it's zone light industrial and these are homes. They're actually non-compliant uses within Light Industrial. So to rebuild them, they'd have to rezone or even expand. And this really came out. So to rebuild them, they'd have to rezone or even expand. And this really came out of a um, a HARP program. Um, request to rebuild a home that is uh, not safe. And so HARP, that, you know, it's the homeowner assistance and reimbursement program. And at the state level, I believe it's administered by the Texas General Land Office. So in order to help out this homeowner at the corner. That would have to be rezone to be able to build a code-compliant house, brand new, but within the character of the neighborhood. So staff work together to look at, if we're gonna do a city-initiated rezoning, perhaps we need to look at it comprehensively and see. If other properties should be rezoned. So the entire block, uh, the proposal is to rezone, those are existing residential. It it gives an opportunity for future redevelopment. Now, this is within the Moore Park Edition subdivision plot. And which is from eighteen ninety-four, so this is one of our older parts of the neighborhood. In in terms of the industrial uses, you know, certainly the the railroad is on the other side of. Uh, Hilliard Distribution Company and other light industrial makes sense along the railroad. But this, as single-family attached to, would be a good transition from the industrial. To um, other residential that's already in existence and and future. So and the Development Review Committee did review this on August thirtieth, and no issues were identified. And so here you can see the zoning map, and of course, the the railroad is just on the east side of Twelfth. And and so you can see that all makes sense uh, for now. But certainly having that transition from the industrial to residential, which multifamily too. Which of course also allows single-family made sense. And so the comprehensive plan identifies this area as downtown transitional. And so once again, that just reinforces the need to have a um, a a good transition from. Uh, from the industrial to other residential in the area. Uh, includes a variety of housing types with, you know, townhomes, but also detached single-family, which is what is there currently. And what the HARP program will reconstruct. But in the future, there could be an opportunity for uh, some townhomes as an example. And so the downtown neighborhood planning district, you can see, this is within the north end sub-district. And so this is within the residential infill area in yellow. And uh, and so certainly um, complies with the neighborhood plan. And so top left-hand corner is actually the house, uh, and may look. From this perspective, as though it's not, you know, in dangerous, but it is. I mean, it really is in complete disrepair. And as much as we'd like to see it get repaired, it's just not feasible. And so then uh, you can see the other homes that are surrounding it. And then to the north, you've got uh, vacant property to the north of East Downs. And then Calhoun, you've got um, our our city-owned property. And to the east, of course, uh, Jack Hilliard Distribution Company. And then to the west, other existing homes that are in around a hundred years old or or older. And so just looking at uh, L I versus uh, single-family attached. I mean, the the big takeaway is that you can't do residential in L I. So thirteen notices were sent out, property owners within two hundred feet. One was returned in agreement. You can see that was a property owner just on the other side of East Downs, and we didn't receive any opposition. And so looking at the compliance, um, staff has determined that it complies with all relevant plans. And so we're recommending approval. And at the September sixteenth meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended. Approval six to zero. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Counsel, anything for Mr. Chandler? Nothing? All right, this item is subject to a public hearing. Um, anyone wishing to speak may do so, step to the podium or raise your hand on the platform. Nobody? Nothing? Okay, very good. Then I will close the public hearing on item nine, and council, entertain a motion.
Approve item nine.
Second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Please cast your vote. Item nine passes five votes to zero. Item ten is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance, authorizing an amendment. And adopting the tax increment financing reinvestment zone number one financing and project plans for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And to transfer project savings to the Santa Fe Community Market Project. Ms. Bernard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you just read, this is a simple um, amendment to the financing plan in the first reading. It's transferring five hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars to the. Funding uh, budget for the Santa Fe market. Um, and tonight on your agenda, you approved item new on the consent agenda, which awarded the construction contract. This additional funding is for the um, construction phase services related to the construction contract. Um, various other items to include material testing, a mural, um, some picnic tables and trash receptacles. A contingency and technology and security cameras for the site. And this would bring the total project cost to uh, just slightly over four million dollars. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if we need to do that.
Thank you. Counsel, anybody have any questions for Tracy before we open the public hearing? Okay, there being none, I will um, open the public hearing on item number ten. Come on.
Alan Lidle here in Temple. Why are we doing this? Is there any way we can move this kind of thing? It doesn't have to go through two public hearings, and y'all can just, you know. Vote on it, do it without having to.
Don't you wanna know where your money's going?
I would love to know where my money's going, but I, nobody would understand what we just talked about. Who do we care?
Probably not.
There you go. Thank you.
And it's by uh, state statute. Chapter three eleven that, uh, I I don't wanna, Kathy can correct me, but the um, what. At our charter that it requires two readings.
No, you could change it, but it would be a heavy lift.
That requires an election. You know, I got time for that.
Into public hearings.
You're not really that healthy. We love it. Nobody on the platform? Okay, very good. With that, then um, I will close the public hearing. Council, entertain a motion on um, uh, item ten.
Question to approve item ten is presented.
We have a motion by Councilmember Long. We have a second by uh, Councilmember Pilkington. Council, please cast your vote. Item number ten passes um, five votes to zero. It is currently six oh five. Thank you all for attending. And this meeting is adjourned. Have a good weekend.